And that's like um that they're going in the lounge.
And go in the lounge.
Hi Leah.
Yeah, hi. Sorry, I'm a little bit late.
All right.
Hi Julia.
Hi Leah, hi Julia. How are you feeling?
I'm okay.
And you're still all in one piece?
Yeah.
Excellent. Well done.
I think we're just waiting for one more board member. Give her a few, a couple more minutes here.
That was me, Dad.
What was that?
It was me that did that, so you should be in control too now.
Oh, what did you do? Um, let me make sure before you leave that I can share my screen. One second.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, looks like I can. Okay. And will I just get a uh a pop-up message or something if we get another attendee trying to join?
Yeah, you'll get that at the top of your screen, hopefully.
Okay.
And I'll record it as well.
Yeah.
So just everyone knows, I've got to go to the facility meeting at the school district at the.
Yeah.
Right, so um Thad's the host and we're gonna, I'm setting the live stream up before I go and I'm gonna record it as a backup as well. Um, in cloud and if it doesn't work, I'll check it when I get back. I'll upload it later on, right when I get home. Um, but uh, that's your tech, your tech.
So it should be streaming Robbie from a minute, any minute now, or?
Whenever you say, yeah, we're good to, yeah, oh. Um, because you, I've made you the host, you're gonna actually, Thad, can you hit record on your side? Very button.
Should be a record button.
One, yeah, one second. Um, bottom where? Oh yeah, recorder, there it is. Okay, um, you wouldn't know I use tech all day.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so I can just hit record and then stop recording and and the stream will just stop whenever I end the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, well, it'll just go to a black screen at the end for the live streaming, but I'll be kind of watching and I'll close it from my side, the live streaming itself. Um, they have a couple minutes of black at the end, but it, there'll be nothing. Um, I would, when it goes to record, I would hit record in the cloud, because it's your computer.
Oh yeah, record in the cloud, okay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead. Go ahead.
Robbie, Columbia Community, the, the school. There's a square.
That's sorry, that's just my live streaming computer. I'll change it to live stream.
Thank you.
All right, I think we'll go ahead and we can go ahead and start streaming. Hopefully Avilia will be able to join as we get going. I haven't heard. Otherwise, but um, I think we should go ahead and get started.
Okay, there it goes.
I will start recording.
Yep.
Recording in progress.
All right, are we live?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Robbie. All right, I want to welcome everyone to the January 10th special meeting of the MCS Board of Directors. Um, we have a agenda item that really just includes one thing tonight, an item that we started discussing in November's regular meeting. Uh, but, but did not want to make any decisions on because uh, at that meeting, we were not able to have all of board members present for such an important topic. Uh, had similar, uh, well, December meeting was canceled due to weather-related um, issues, so we are back. Uh, focusing just on the topic of MCS salary adjustments. Um, just for some background, we've already, you know, the, the, the sort of history behind this discussion is that we were able to secure additional ongoing funding from our district that started this school year. The board has already reviewed and made compensation changes to bring our licensed staff positions to a level of parity with uh, the district. And have been doing some analysis and had numerous discussions to try to do the same for our administrative positions and a couple of support positions that have been in, have been identified as also being underpaid with respect to the district, so. Um, that discussion is ongoing and we have a- almost everyone present tonight to be able to sort of have a discussion. I did um, sort of go through the analysis and proposal that Dan and Leah and I put together as directed by the board. Uh, in a previous, I believe it was the October regular meeting. I'll presume everyone either was present for us to go through that presentation or um, has since watched the recorded version. Uh, but that sort of brings me to, you know, wanting to understand how everybody'd like to proceed tonight. Should I share that presentation to the screen so we can quickly go through it, um, or at least have it to reference? Go ahead, Dan.
I think we should just do a real quick recap, just so we, uh, anybody who's watching has that information as well, and then we can, I believe Carol and Julia were not at the meeting and um, we didn't get your opinions on that, so I want to hear that. And anybody else, correct me if my memory is wrong, that wasn't there.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Just proceed from that point.
Everybody see uh, my screen? I'll assume that's a yes. Uh, I may not be able to see everybody's hands if they are raised, so just ver- please verbally interrupt me if, if I need to be interrupted. Um, proposal contains, uh, this proposal contains proposed changes to our ED, Dean of Students, Business Manager in Front Office Secretary positions. Those having been identified as sort of the remaining positions at the school that are potentially well below parity uh, to with, you know, comparable positions in the district. Um, focus is really on to, you know, comparing the position requirements as best we can, obviously, there's not always a direct comparison. And trying to get to parity on the requirements of the, of the position relative to similar positions in the area. Uh, I want to stress the difference between that and treating any of this as a, a performance evaluation or uh, evaluation of an individual that might be in the position. Obviously, we don't do that for licensed staff and we need to be careful to not do that for administrative positions either, uh, in a public session. Um, so I just will go through real quickly here, uh, as quickly as possible. Sort of the analysis, we've looked at a lot of this before. Um, you can see here, Executive Director in this, this compensation like we've, we've gone over before is for some of our ED positions is broken down for comparison purposes to a daily rate comparison. And the reason for that is that our, the number of contract days or days for which we contract our executive, our, our administrators is currently quite a bit below what the district does, so uh, you can't really compare salaries apples to apples because we require less days. So the best comparison to start, there's really two, two sort of things to consider here. One is daily rate comparison, because that's really the only way we can compare to the district. And the second, of course, is in future years, not this year, but in future years, do we want to consider changing the number of contract days for which, days for which we contract and compensate our two administrative positions. Uh, currently, we, correct me if I misspeak Janet, but I think currently both our admin positions are contracted at 210 days. Um, and I think the district, in the district, a high school principal is contracted for 225 days, I believe. And I think elementary principals are 220 days, I believe. Um, I know they're at least 220, so just to give everybody a ballpark, 210 days, 210 contract days is by the time you take, if you assume obviously a five-day work week, take out holidays and such and weekends, 210 days leaves uh, six weeks uh, of uh, time off, uh, away from the job in the summer. Um, so that's kind of what we have with our admin positions. I believe the district's admin positions are closer to four weeks. Uh, time off in the summer, so would come with additional two weeks of compensated contract days. Um, this sort of, uh, the, the proposal here, based on the guidelines that the board had asked Dan and Leah and I to follow previously, was to try to construct a step schedule like our district and Hood River actually have for admins that captured or quantified uh, what an administrator could expect as a pay increase with, as a function of experience, so that would be steps zero, one, two, three, four, five. And then the board, the board also asked us to capture uh, and recognize via differential compensation whether our ED is, and uh, whether any of our administrators are licensed via the charter, charter school registry route, or uh, I called it fully licensed for lack of a better term. Uh, I, I would say fully licensed here would mean that, you know, licensed in a way that they could practice the same position in a non-charter school, right? So uh, now I do want to, I do want to note that we, we have that exact same flexibility for our licensed teaching positions and we do not compensate differently for those positions. Uh, so for instance, we are allowed to, all charter schools in Oregon are allowed to have people in licensed teaching positions that do not necessarily have the licensure status that would allow them to teach in D21. Um, and we, and, and we have historically taken advantage of that capability and, and gotten some really good teachers. As a result, we don't compensate differently for that in our teaching positions, just, just, just to note that for the board. There was a directive from the board to try to capture that difference for our admin positions and Leah and Dan and I have done that here. Um, we tried to, we've, we've got a couple of extra steps in this schedule versus what the district has. So the district, I believe, is your steps zero through three. We added two additional steps. Um, and tried to make the scale, you know, the goal here was to kind of make the scale uh, for ED position and attractive career path for say someone in a district high school principal position that was maybe starting to max out on their step schedule. And make, you know, a right, a, a, a move to the ED position at Mojer, an attractive career room, career move. Um, you know, recognizing that why as a person in that position in the district might not really have any where to go unless the superintendent job opens up. Um, each step rec- is recognized by a 3% increase. That's very similar to what we have for our licensed staff and our support staff. The difference in the two columns is also 3%. Uh, and you can kind of see here in the bottom table how that all pans out on a daily rate comp difference compared to the district, so. Uh, the way you can read this table is that uh, if, if someone were to move over, say a high school principal were to move over to Mojer School, someone practicing the district as a high school principal moved to Mojer School into the ED position, if they were moving into steps zero through three, as granted, given by their experience, they would immediately have a 3% raise relative to what they were getting paid at D21. And then the extra step four and five obviously provides an opportunity to increase their compensation beyond what they would be able to at the district where they would normally max out at step three. Um.
Thad, do you want, when do you want questions, Thad?
Uh, I'm open to whatever people want to do. If people want me to uh, go through all of it first and then we come back, that's fine, or we can take them as we go. I don't really have a strong preference. I would say, uh, you know, since all this stuff sort of has to be taken as a big picture, since we don't have an infinite pot of money to work for, I would ma- maybe it's best to, if there are questions about what we proposed or the mechanics of why we proposed it or whatever, let's maybe ask those along the way. If there's disagreements on the exact amounts, I guess those could come now or later. You know, we can always go back and revisit any of this.
Well, I just have some questions about, you know, what you've just said on this screen. So that'd be helpful to be now.
Sure.
Okay, um, one, um, so I'm a bit confused because wh- when we did the teachers, we um, we could see the D21 salary scale. But in this packet, we can't see the D21 salary scale and I, I just wondered why, you know, like a D21 high school principal, we don't know what they make.
Um, we, we've actually reviewed that information in this, in a, in our own board meeting.
They make what, they make what it shows here, so.
What does it show?
Zero, step zero three three, the principal makes 527 through 576. This is versus D21 high school principal on the lower chart. See what says that?
Wait, wait.
So.
On the top chart, Dan?
The top chart, the top chart. Shows you the dollars per day. The bottom chart shows you the difference between that dollar and the high school principal, so 0% difference, so you can see that step zero for free on the lower chart.
Wait, but on the.
Our, go ahead. It's the same numbers, it's just, it's, it's the same numbers above, it's just represented as a percentage down below.
So are you saying? What's that one?
Let, let me just, I, I rather than do this, let me, let me just pull up what we've looked at in previous meetings. Um, you can see it on the screen now.
Uh, yes, but just in.
Be a color-coded chart?
Yeah, but just in percentages and not dollar amounts, so there's a high school principal.
Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
But no dollar amounts, just percentages.
Yeah. Okay, here's dollar amounts.
Where's that? Uh, okay, that's great. So a dollar, I'm, so the second sheet is the second spreadsheet there, that's the dollar amount. So high school principal makes 527 a day, say step one.
Yeah.
And that's the same as, same as the other thing we were just showing.
Okay, so.
And uh, so right, right now, the, if you, if you look at the spreadsheet on the screen.
Yeah.
Our Executive Director at their current compensation rate makes $534 a day.
Okay, great, great, I got it.
A, a, a high school principal at step one makes.
527.
527, yes.
Okay, so could you go back to the, sorry, can you go back to the other chart? That's great.
Yeah, um, the other, the presentation I started with when you say other chart.
Yeah. Because it doesn't say on that one.
Well, this is all percentages because uh, you know, otherwise I, so.
It was just too many charts. Okay, I've got that. Um, so what you're saying is that um, basically the D21 high school principal is exactly similar through step zero through three.
No, I'm saying that if we adopt the proposal, this, this slide is what we're proposing to change the compensation to. Not what it currently is. Right? W- w- we don't currently have a step schedule for our Executive Director compensation, so.
Okay, so steps zero are equal as of today.
Yeah, set in it, no, not as of today. This is what we're, this is what Leah and Dan and I came up with as a proposal to change it to.
Carolyn.
As of today, because we don't have, we don't have any steps in our admin comp today.
But the current admin salary, what you just showed us, Thad, it falls between um, step by that five thirty-four. Right.
Yeah. So this is a better, if you want to compare, yeah.
Julia, what were you saying?
What I was trying to say is that our current administrator is paid at the same rate as a high school principal at D21 who um, in between, sort of in between steps one and two. She, she's paid higher than step one, but lower than step two.
Great. Great.
You can kind of see that. Hopefully you can see this chart. This is, we looked at this in like, I think it was the October meeting. This chart.
Okay.
So.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I'm back to the, your, your presentation just about what, what is parity here? Um, you're thinking about future hiring. I could see doing it either way, but it does seem like the apples to apples is the fully licensed to the fully licensed and if we want to seek parity with the district. Um, and what we're doing actually is going above the district in each of those positions, starting from step zero. Uh, to make Mojer more attractive than the district positions and not equally attractive, I would say. Um, the, you've got the salaries the same um, for someone who has a charter school registry. Who, but who could not practice or could not be an administrator in the district, so I don't see that as being where the competitive threat would be in future hiring. That's a different situation, that's someone who wouldn't qualify for a D21 principal position. Um, and couldn't, so I'm just pointing out that we've opted sort of a high parity, it's actually not parity with the district. Um, arguably, we've, we have opted to have an administrator position that we've paid higher than D21. Um, in order to, I mean, and one argument in favor of doing that would be to attract away administrators, make Mojer more attractive or just in recognition that our um, that our principal uh, has a greater range of duties um, than a D21 principal, which is a different discussion, but I, I do think that that's an important distinction.
I can speak to that for a second.
I disagree that, I, I mean, I, I see your point. But I don't think our ED position i- is as uh, well-defined as a high school principal position, so I, I think that this does represent parity if you try, if you attempt, and this is difficult to quantify, but if we attempt to quantify the much more varied duties and responsibilities that come with being ED of our school, I believe it is actually parity. That's, that's my belief.
Well, maybe we're getting into semantics, but then, then you would just argue that the, the, the two posi- positions aren't equal, so we are actually.
I think we all agree that they're not. It's just we're in this difficult position of, uh, trying to figure out what that means. It's not an easy thing.
You remember at the previous, um, this was when we were um, in our, I think it was um, August retreat, that board. And the decision or the recommendation that that board made was to pay above the D21 high school principal and below the D21 superintendent. And that, after a considerable discussion, that was actually that board's recommendation, and the reason for that is because of everything that.
Yeah, so there was discussion in multiple meetings, including August, but not limited to it, and the, the directives that Leah and Dan and I were asked to sort of use as guardrails or define our proposal was to come up with something that had a step schedule. Recognized in some form the difference between the, the, the licensure uh, paths that, that we have available for our admins. And to have something that is for which a high school principal comp represents the lower bound. I think, I believe, I believe the exact words of the directive, if we went back, were somewhere between high school principal and superintendent.
Correct.
More definition.
Yeah, that's what I understood from that meeting. That was the final recommendation. Um, I'm, I, I, I'm um, o- okay about what you've got here as a proposal. Um, I, I just wanted a bit more clarification on where that actual compensation was. Um, there's a couple of sort of comments that I would make. I think one thing is that if you are a high school principal in white salmon and you apply to Mojer, you would not qualify as fully licensed. However, you would qualify on the charter school registry. So I'm, I'm not, um, I, I can go either way, but I don't think it's that important um, for the actual expertise of a person that we might hire of whether we have these two categories. Um, because the TSBC licensing for Oregon is, for instance, if you've taken Pacific Northwest geography, then you can get TSBC fully licensed. But if you happen to take Northwest um, Washington State geography or something, you wouldn't qualify as an administrator. A- and so that's why I'm not absolutely keen on all that full, um, you know, the, the word fully licensed and charter school registry. Because the difference in how it relates to an Executive Director at our school I think is very little. We also had someone apply that had a full law degree and were very qualified. And um, they brought an extensive background that would have been very useful to Mojer. Um, and um, only had a teacher's sort of conversion, something or other. They would fall under registry. But I think the quality of that person probably would have been really high. So that's why I'm not so keen on the actual TSBC licensing. Um, having, having more money, if you're a fully qualified uh, high school superintendent, uh, high school principal superintendent in Pennsylvania, I think you'll probably do just as good a job in Oregon. But you won't need Oregon licensing, and then you have to pay extensive money to get it, so.
Okay, Carol.
That's my thing, but I'm not that, you know, I can go with either one.
The, the reason it's included there is because as a board, we, the board was, the board asked that we include it there, so that's why it's there. As a whole, that was, that was what, well, the majority of members, which is why it's there.
Yeah, I mean, I, at a, on a personal level, I, you know, if it was just up to me, I, I agree with Carol. I, I, and we don't, we don't differentiate our licensed staff pay based on their licensure mechanism. Um, we don't do that, and I, I don't, but, but we were directed to include some differentiation for that in the proposal, so we've, you know, tried our best to do that. Um, and that's why we're here discussing it. If the board decides to go a different way, now that it's in front of us, that's totally fine.
Hey Thad, one second, can you check and make sure Avalia is not trying to get on, because she sent an email that says she's having a hard time getting on with Zoom, so I just want to make sure she's not in the waiting room there.
Yeah, let me. I don't see. We make sure it doesn't somehow pop up, not pop up if I'm.
I had a hard time getting on line. I had to try a couple times.
Hmm, I don't see any indicators that anyone's in the waiting room.
I'll just send her an email back that says to try again and we'll look for her, okay?
Okay.
It's tricky getting on sometimes.
I, I went in through Daphne's link. I'm not sure if it makes a difference. There were two different links. I didn't have any trouble going through Daphne's.
And could I trouble you to, just in case that's happening, because I know we have had similar things in the past, maybe just quickly email Avilia the link that you were able to use that worked?
Yes, I will.
Some of those emails have multiple links and there's only one that actually works, I think. The others, I'm not sure what they're for, but sometimes it's easy to be trying to make the wrong one work. So um, none of the percentages in these slides, other than when we get to the end of the presentation, represent what the proposal would mean in terms of a rate, a percentage raise for the position as compared to what we're compensating now. I can, I, I have that information. And, and it is in the presentation, but I kind of do it for all four positions at once at the end. Um, these percentage comparisons here, just compared to where the proposal would put us with respect to the district. Uh, for this position specifically, the high school principal comp for the district. Um, if the proposal we are making is adopted. And these are comparisons for daily rate compensation, be, because we currently contract for two weeks less. The salary would actually still be less, the annual salary, right? So there's, and, and, and that's going to be the case for this year anyway, because the the non-contract days, the sort of holiday period has already ended for this contract year. It's, it's in the summer, it's front-loaded on the beginning of the contract year. Since our contract years start on July 1st, so whether to change our contract structure for administrators to include more days is a decision for the upcoming contract year. Um, just keep that in mind.
And I think for context, from the last meeting, there seemed to be some agreement that the 220 days was what many people wanted to see, because it's already what Janet worked anyway. So trying to stay underneath the days, trying to stay at 210, didn't seem attainable. Even if it's, you know, what we would like to see happen there. So that was my recollection of our conversation from the last meeting.
I would definitely like to see it at two twenty. Um, you know, I'm I'm fine with a um proposal. Um, at two twenty. Uh, I I would like to have seen it a little bit above the D twenty one rate, because I think. Um, we all agree that the ED position is different to a principal and has a lot more responsibility. Um, but I'm not particularly keen on um the two levels. I just feel that teachers are considered equal and our admin should be considered equal. And I think. I think for the bottom line for me is it doesn't produce a better ED for our students. And that to me is always. The most important thing. What's the effect of the? See that difference, and I haven't seen that diff- a lot of schools.
I I agree with um what Carol has said, and I just, I appreciate the examples that you gave. That um really gave context. So thank you.
Anyone else? Well, yeah, I I maybe I've been one of the front um. Leaders in the in in having a distinction here. And I will admit that I don't have administrator training, and I don't know what that administrator training entails, but I am responding to feedback. From um, from the community and former teachers and just sort of a variety of folks who've expressed concern. Uh, about having administrators at our school that don't have administrator training and sort of the um. The consequences of that. And and I, it makes logical sense to me. As an attorney, I would not absolutely not feel. Um, qualified to be an administrator of school. Janet's job is was incre- it's way, you gotta be smart, but it's way different, and the skill sets required. Are way different, and it. Um, I have to imagine that if there is training and a degree in being an administrator, that that means something. Um, I'm open to the possibility that um it doesn't, and that that is all just wasted time. Um, but I think if we are trying to recruit, you know, protect ourselves in future years uh for being able to be competitive with the district, certainly makes. Sense to me that we would have a salary that. Um, and if you're, what you're saying is that this is a, this is a tougher job, um, I think that this chart currently reflects that. We would be paying more than they would be making, um, and they would qualify for a a D twenty one principal position. Um, but our admin, but at the same time paying our administrators the same amount as someone who has done that extra training. Um, and I apologize for being short of breath. I'm just. Under the weather. Um, we would be paying our admin, our current administrators, the same as the district twenty one uh principals who have gone through administrative training and. Um, and if someone wants to uh educate me on what that training is and and maybe it is truly just really minimal, and there are not that many skills, but to me. Um, having a a whole bunch of teachers in my family. Who never were or aspire to be administrators. Um, I have a ton of respect for teachers, but I also see that they would have made. Um, not not great, my own father, uh, uh, not a great administrator, um, that there are very different skills. Um, and I applaud uh our current administrators. I I have no, uh, this is not a performance review. Um, I'm just thinking sort of future and hiring, um, and that that distinction makes a lot of sense to me.
Julia, do you think we should have the same distinction for our teachers then?
Yeah, I would probably, um, I, you know, I don't recall those conversations. Um, I I it does. And I wonder, I would love to hear from the from the faculty how they feel about. Um, the credential teachers making exactly the same at step one as um teachers who have not. Uh, you know, my own um partner taught at Moser School, and I think would tell you that um stepping into a teaching position without teacher training. There was a incredibly sharp and painful learning curve um that was real. Uh, because there was not all of that background teaching and training. And and so I don't want to open that conversation back up, and I'm sorry we didn't have it when we. Consider teacher conversation, compensation, but to me, I. You know, as someone with advanced degrees who's worked really hard for them, I value them. I think that there was, there there was a purpose uh to getting my JD. Um, there are states where you can just take the bar and practice law. Um, but I I I think uh, you know, that education should be. Rewarded. It costs money. It takes time. Um, and. Uh, unless we've truly have some sort of evidence that it just doesn't actually result in some skills. And translate, I I just can't imagine, uh, you know, that the type, the complexity of. Um, discipline, for example, that a dean of students needs to deal with, um, and then stepping into that without training. So on the job training will get you there, but I have to imagine that on day one, um, someone who has not had that training. Is less prepared than someone who has.
And I would say I don't look at it as. You know, I look at it as like we look at a bachelor's or master's in in the teachers pay scales. I don't see it as, you know, I mean, I, that's how I've been looking at it. Maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way, but that's. You know, you're you're paying more for that degree that they have or that training that they have. So that's, that's how I have looked at it. But uh, you know, again, I could be wrong in that.
I I wonder, yeah. You know, I think the bachelor's and the master's, I I really do believe that, I mean, I absolutely value education, and I I agree with a lot of what you're saying, Julia. I really do. Um, there's a big difference between the bachelor's level and the master's level, and I do think we should pay for that. The challenge that I have is that um, the endorsements and the administrator certificate itself. I haven't seen so much value in that. In how it relates in practicality to the actual operation of a school. And the other thing I think that we're missing here is that there are so many trainings, you know, I know. Our ED and our dean of students has just, they've done some webinars this year. Those are the trainings that are being offered now. And they do not fit any TSBC licensure. So they don't advance anybody. But the value to me of our dean of students taking an SEL webinar training. Is very high, because that's currently what's an issue. Mental health is an issue. So I would rather see her put her time into taking those trainings. Than say work on an admin certificate that um crosses off the the boxes. Um, and there's probably, I would say up to two a week offered right now. I'm sure a lot of you see it on your your OSBA email. Education Week offers incredible trainings. And those are all the up to date trainings, and I want our admin to stay with the up to date needs of our school and say. Well, our SEL or our mental health for our students is an issue, or our diversity is an issue. Or our, you know, our reading program is an issue. And immediately you can go online and take a training right for that very purpose. But it won't advance you on TSBC licensure.
Well, I think, Carol, you're suggesting somehow the two are are mutually exclusive, and I would assume those trainings would also be available to someone that was. To use the language that's here, fully licensed. And I don't know, I don't see a way on our pay scale to incentivize taking those trainings. Like, I would, I would love to reward our current ED for taking those trainings and. Or set some sort of minimum number that we um strongly encourage, but I I don't know how to reflect that in the pay scale. That seems like it gets complicated.
Well, I don't think you can reflect it in the pay scale, but I think it absolutely reflects in our evaluation. And um, I know Janet happened to share one of her goals with me, and that was doing. Um, I can't remember which webinar, but you know, some training. Um, and so it's not that I'm against. Education, uh, I I'm fully for it, and I think there is a huge difference between uh. A bachelor's and a master's in qualification and in skill, but also. Um, you you bring the example up of somebody stepping in that hasn't had teacher training, but. Someone that's on the charter school registry often has had teacher training. They've just either let their, they've had a child, they've let their license sure expire, so then it costs hundreds of dollars to renew it. Or they've come from another state. And they're just as valuable if they've taught in Washington or Montana or Idaho and have a full license there. But then they get paid less if if they're with us, and the teachers don't, our our teachers don't. We recognize them all as equal. If Janet hires them and thinks they're good enough to be on our staff, they're equal. So I just feel that. If we're not looking at a difference for our teachers, I don't feel we should probably look at a difference for administrators. It's not that I don't value. Um, qualifications, I do, but um, but I don't see that um. I think it's an added complication and and it's not going to get us a better administrator. But, you know, that's. I'm not stuck on anything. I I can go either way. Uh, I just want to get the best administrator for Moser School and um. And I like the simplicity of one column. Um. If there can be a way in our evaluations that we reward training. Um, that would be great. I mean, we do right now in our teacher's scale. We do now, you know, if they get fifteen more credit hours, then they go up a step. So you could always add something like that into the admin. In their evaluation that they could be, they could be bonused on more training that they took. Um. I don't know, those, just a couple of thoughts. I don't know. What is, what are other people think?
I was just gonna add, um, just in those, those last two examples, um. That you suggested that um maybe a licensure has lapsed, or we are getting a candidate from another state that would need to require. Oregon licensure. I think that the compensation difference would make that extra hurdle worthwhile to that individual had they already had the administrator training. I don't think that would be uh negative to us. Getting a candidate um in that instance, and I, I don't really see. If we're going to be being the same as D twenty one, I don't really see there being a negative to having the two scales. That's just my two cents.
Um, so there's a couple of ways we could continue here, and we could. Recognize that that particular question is still an open question and come back to it, but proceed with the other positions, or we could try to hammer this one question out right now. I think I'd prefer to get through the rest of the. Positions, knowing this is an open question still. Is that fair? Um, I did, I did just send an email to Robbie because I got. Very temporarily dropped. From the meeting, and now that I'm back. Uh, I'm not the host anymore, so I think the meeting is recording still. Um, and I believe I can see that it's live streaming still.
Yeah, it says it's recording and live streaming.
Okay, good. All right. Must be recording from Robbie's end. Um. Should we proceed to the, with the other three positions and then just know that we might need to come back to this one? Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Uh, this just breaks the. Proposal we just looked at. Into a salary level comparison, and this is based on.
I don't think you're sharing your screen anymore.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Okay, can you see my screen now?
Yep.
Okay. So there's two tables here. The one on the upper left is a. Compares. What this proposal would mean for salary at our current. Two hundred and ten contract day level. So this really represents what we're committing to this current year. Uh, if we were to accept this proposal. The table on the right looks at the same daily compensation rate, but for a two hundred and twenty day contract. Um. And then the table right below that compares it to the. District High School Principal Position, recognizing that the D twenty one High School Principal Position is actually a two hundred and twenty five day position. So. When you compare on annual salary basis. Uh, even at two hundred and twenty days. The leftmost column labeled Charter School Registry would be underpaid relative to a high school position on an annual salary basis, not a daily comp basis. By about two percent uh for the first four steps. And if a, if a high school principal were to move directly over. They would make about point seven percent more than they would at the district, but of course with an uh five days less contracted work. Does that make sense? Okay. It always gets a little complicated with the percentage comparisons because the number of contract days is different, but I hope that lays things down. Um. Dean of Students, again, daily rate. The uh. Let me pull up the old, this is our current comparison. Of the dean of students' compensation rate. To the three available district assistant principal positions. Elementary, middle, and high school. So. Um, uh, obviously, as you can see here, our current compensation, even at two hundred and ten days, or even on a daily rate basis, uh. For our assistant admin position is pretty. Quite significantly less than any of the. Assistant administrator positions at the district. Um. So the proposal, if I go back to that.
Julie, hold your hand up.
Oh, sorry, I I need to change my, sorry, Julia, I missed that. My, when I share my screen, I don't see all your faces unless I manually, go ahead, Julia.
Thanks, Sad. Um, I do recall from our in-person meeting, fair amount of uh discussion about. Our current, our ED's duties compared to a high school principal and the um sort of. Not being um really apples to apples, because it was, there's a lot of uh complexity to the ED job and Janet's job. I'm curious, I don't recall, and maybe I'm just forgetting, whether we talked about comparing the dean of students to um. Uh, vice principal and and whether those like seem really similar. Or there's a bunch more additional duties that normally wouldn't fall on a vice principal. Um, I I'm just curious to get a sense for that, and I know we got. A list of Jen's current um. All the things she's responsible for, um, but I don't have a good sense for what a vice principal in the district is responsible for, so I can't. Um, on um sort of judge whether that's. A really good comparison, a mediocre comparison, kind of the best we can do. Um, and I wonder if somebody else has a good sense of that.
Um, I I can give my opinion, uh, but it's just one opinion. Um, Julia, I think our dean of students or vice principal. Is the most similar position of all our positions. To a, to a district school. It's interesting, because the ED isn't similar, the front office secretary and our business manager, none of those are similar. They're all very different in a charter school. But the vice principal position is probably the most similar. Um, they do have, uh, Moser does have some extra responsibilities. But I would say. I would say ninety percent of their job is similar, and the only thing, but that's just my opinion, and I think Janet. Should share her opinion on that. The only thing I would say is that it was um, that's comparison here was to an elementary school. Principal, and Jen is primarily, she is um elementary vice principal, but she's also um middle school. Um, and is responsible for all the middle school behavior. So in some ways, we should be looking at something. That does look at some of the middle school pay as a middle school vice principal, because as we all know. Middle school does add a whole nother. Um, facet to that, that position. But Janet, what do you think?
Yeah, uh, that's the one comment I made at our last board meeting was, I noticed that it was compared to an elementary. Vice principal, and I felt like it should be closer to a middle school vice principal, because. She takes the lead with um middle school as far as, you know. Um, behavior, um, even academics. I mean, I'm right there alongside of her, but she has meetings by herself. Um, behavior, um even academics, I mean, I'm right there alongside of her, but she has meetings by herself at times. So she really needs to know middle school curriculum, middle school standards, middle school social emotional. For the behaviors, but also four-year-old through fifth grade. So, um, it it would be hard for me to compare it to just a middle school. Or I mean, just an elementary vice principal because her duties are wider than that. So, that's my two cents.
So is it fair to say if I were to try to blend Carol's comments and yours Janet that. It of of our admin positions, it's it's the most similar to a district position, perhaps with the main difference being that it requires a a bit more of a breadth.
Yes.
Focus across a wider age range of kids.
Right.
Not more, not more kids, just a a wider age range.
Wider range and and needing to understand, you know, the emotional and social and academic. Makeup of each of the grade levels. Um. Yes, yes, that, I I would agree with that statement.
And and also extending your own ability to relate to an eighth grader that's talking to you. As well as a very young four or five-year-old. So you need to extend your own abilities as well. But that, can you go back to your screen? I mean, your other, your, that's it. Because I thought the numbers were quite good on this one. I mean, again, I'm not keen on the two columns because again, in this one. You know, if you had a year out working at OHSU in their um. Um developmental, um, I forgot what their clinic's called, Development Disability Developmental Disabilities Clinic. If you had a year out working there as an intern. It would not make you fully licensed under TSBC, but heck, it would make you a darn good dean of students at Moser School. Right now. Um, so there's just so many other, you know, skills that um. The that are that are more than, you know, taking a. A one-on-one class in counseling. That that you can get around the the United States and and bring to this position, so. You know, again. I'm not so keen on that, but I like the numbers that you've got here, as long as we do remember that. You know, she is actually middle school vice principal too.
Dan, I see your hand.
I just, I don't know for any kind of reference, but what is a middle school and D twenty one, how many students do they have? As far as looking at the proportion of students that uh our E our Dean of Students is working with at our middle school, so is it, you know. We have three classes of middle school students, sixty approximately, is that correct, Janet?
Correct.
And then what is traditionally at. Anyone in the middle schools and between one, what what numbers are they looking at? Do you know?
I don't, no.
Probably three hundred, you know, three hundred or so. I mean, it's a huge amount.
Right, and I think that was part part of the reasoning behind using that. Elementary school versus a middle school, just the the sheer number of students.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, these are harder things because. With, uh, you know, our uh. Teacher positions, you know, position pretty much is comparable, class sizes, I mean, we try to have smaller class sizes, but a class is a class and. You know, a middle school assistant principal dealing with three hundred kids is significantly different than. Well, they are all middle schoolers, recognize, I recognize that, so it's kind of like. I guess the challenge is quantifying like, yes, there's a bigger breadth of of uh. Ability to relate to different age kids and and handle the challenges each of those different ages would have. But we also have. Roughly half the number of students, so how how do, when you put all that into a. Form, like, how do you put all that into a formula and come up with something that seems like sort of roughly comparable as far as parity goes um.
Yeah, Google, I think, sorry.
Well, oh, sorry, go ahead, Julia.
I was just gonna say, Google suggests that the Dallas Middle School has six hundred students. Which is um sort of exponentially larger than our middle school.
Yeah. I mean, I I'll just say that I I personally feel like the for a a variety of reasons, but mostly the smaller size of the school and the fact that. Generally speaking, the position is very comparable, very similar. With the, really the main exception being the more varied range of ages. Um, I I still feel like the elementary vice principal position is a is a valid comp point. When we factor in all these other sort of things that are admittedly difficult to uh. Quantify, tha- that's just my personal feeling, um. Was it just me that put this together or made that decision, but um, you you know, I I uh, that's my personal feeling.
I I agree with that, that, I mean, I really do, I I I do think this is the most comparable. And our middle school is small, um. So the numbers, you know, are not the same, but but I think I think this is a good comparison, but just. The back of our minds, we just need to remember that she does deal with a much broader range. Um, and if you have to know and evaluate a health curriculum for sixty students. It's actually the same amount of work as whether you have to do it for six hundred. Um. But but I still think there's a huge difference in only working with sixty students. So I I like this proposal, I I think it's good.
We do, we do have growth, we we have room for growth with enrollment, you know, if we were capped in our middle school, we'd have closer to eighty-five. I know that's a far cry from six hundred, but right now enrollment is down in middle school, but just thinking in the future. Um, hopefully, we'll get to that number again.
Oh, and I do think the two twenty days is incredibly important. For this position. I don't know how Janet feels, but.
Yeah, I agree.
So I sort of went to the next slide, which shows all this in in the form of annual compensation, yeah, and same format as the ED table. Um. There any questions about this slide? Um, acknowledge that there might still be some room for discussion on the two columns in the table, let's keep that. On the side for now and move on to. The Business Manager Position, so uh with our Business Manager Position, that's in currently compensated at an hourly rate. So I have um and and there's no real, there's no comparable position. In the district to just go compare this to, so the the only one at the district that we could have used was the CFO. But that's not really a good comparison, and the difference is gigantic if if you compare it to the CFO. Um. Wh- what we decided to do on this was to try to buil- build a um. Table that both recognized level of education, since in the sort of accounting. You know, in in business-related responsibilities, that can mean a a big difference to as far as who's in the position. And the value they bring to the school. So to to have a a table that had both the BA and an MA column. And then um the table actually currently has sixteen steps in it, just like our licensed and support staff. Tables have, so that's not new. Um. What we kind of did was to, as a co- comparison point here, try to explain this simply, and if I'm, it's confusing. Please say so. Was to basically look at the compensation we pay our licensed staff. Turned into an hourly rate, so we were comparing apples to apples and try to align this table. Uh, with a teacher that would be, you know, what they would, what they would make per hour at the same level of experience. And education. So uh as a, for instance, with this proposal, if you look on the proposed table here. Uh, a teacher with a BA and zero years of experience, if you were to break their pay down into dollars per hour. At Moser School with the new changes we've made, they make twenty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents an hour. Uh, with an MA, they would make thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents an hour. Our business manager with that same level of education, our vis- our current business manager actually has a masters. Uh, would make twenty-one dollars and eighty cents an hour if they had zero experience. Um. So what what we chose to do, for lack of a, you know, it it felt like a fair thing, and and again, this is, this is probably the hardest position to come up with a comp point. Was to try to align the hourly compensation rate for our business manager in a table that um. Were compensated them again on an hourly basis. The same as a teacher with the same level of education and experience would make per hour. Um. And the 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 differences and as far as what that means for compensation end up being pretty significant, as you can see. Um. This, you know, far as pay differential, um. This is not really that surprising to me, given that historically in my time on the board, we've had a horrible time recruiting qualified business managers. Horrible time, getting people to even apply. Um, and I guess that maybe is less surprising to me now. When I look at how we pay our that position. Um. But if 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 we were to try to align the hourly comp. For our business manager. Without of a teacher of the same experience and and education level, uh this is sort of the level of change we'd be making.
Um. Hey, that.
Yeah.
Um, are are you, is is a good time now for questions?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, I'm I'm, yeah.
Okay, so this was, this was a position that um intrigued me because I know, you know, least about business and. Um, and I've never really looked at business managers that much within education. So I started making some inquiries because I felt it was a little um interesting, I suppose, to compare a business manager to a teacher. Um, I really like the BA and the MA. Column, I absolutely hear in our business manager, I I thoroughly support education. And steps, Julia, you'll be pleased to know, um, but obviously I feel. That um the education of a business manager is really important, but. I talked to some other business managers um in schools. And um I particularly talked to some in um Wasco County that are not in D twenty-one. Uh, because obviously we're not comparable. And the key thing that I got from this is that the pay of a business manager. Relates to the size of the budget that they're dealing with.
Okay.
I thought that was very interesting. So for instance, um, at Doofa, they're dealing with a fourteen million dollar budget. And their business manager, um. It it it's very different, and I can't quote personal salaries, um. But uh after um an entire career of thirty-odd years. Then their salary wouldn't be hugely different to what was suggested here. Um. When I asked about recommendations and new hires and they asked me. Um, you know, what our business manager was was responsible for, and I gave them a budget of three million, which that is. That, I mean, that's close enough, right, that.
I think that's close enough, yeah.
Um, also, um, so so the recommendation basically came at around forty-five K. For the size of that budget. So, I thought that was um an interesting comparison, but that was. Um, something that they all related to was the size of the budget relates to the size of the salary of the business manager. Um, also, one thing that um was clear was that most business managers. Um, were responsible for board meetings, and they were responsible for board meetings, exec sessions, budget meetings. Um, all meetings of the board that had budget concerns. Um, and they were also responsible. For functions of the board, including all minutes and policies. And if they had that responsibility, then they were at a higher step. But without board responsibilities, they had a much lower step. Um, and then whether they had a business assistant or not. Whether they actually supervised anybody, some people had business assistants for, you know, ten hours or twenty hours a week or so. So, I thought that was really, oh, and grants, whether they were responsible for state and federal grants.
Which are, which ours, obviously, I mean, all of our grants are business managers kind of responsible for, right, yeah.
Yes, yes, we're absolutely, so what I took from that is that. You know, we have a three million dollar budget, um, our business manager is not responsible for any board functions. Does not have any team members under her. Uh, or under the position. Um. And that our salary should relate to the size of our budget. So I thought that was interesting information that I wanted to share.
It is, thank you.
I'll be right back, I just got a call.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Anyone else have any comments? Questions? So Carol, how um. Relative to what you just said.
Yeah.
Are you saying that you feel this proposal is exceeds what's sort of reasonable?
It seems exceed, I I mean, um, I treasure every staff member, so I don't.
And I I know this is tough, it's tough, and I don't, yeah, I, yeah, it's.
You know what I'm saying, I do, I don't want to demean any member of our staff in any of these positions. Um. But it did seem that this proposal um. Was not in line with other small districts in Wasco County. And that it did not reflect the size of our budget, if someone is getting paid. I can't quite do the math, Dad, you probably can, but if if someone's getting paid seventy K to manage a fourteen K budget. If we have.
Where, but where are you getting seventy K from?
Uh, as a salary that was told to me for a Wasco County school.
Oh, okay, seventy K to manage a, how big a budget?
Fourteen K.
Yeah, fourteen million, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, fourteen million, sorry, yeah, um, so if we have a three million dollar budget. Without, and the fourteen million one was with full board responsibilities. You know, which is a lot more training. So that made me just ponder then. More if we only have a three million dollar budget with no board responsibilities, those were the two. Key things that kept coming across, you know, because we all know that if you have to take board minutes, attend board meetings, exec.
But but when you say full board responsibilities, I'm not sure I I would assume that to mean that a a business manager for. A school district with a fourteen million dollar budget is taking board meeting minutes, I I don't, I don't, I don't think I.
They were.
I would.
I spoke to that person and and what they listed was attending all board meetings, board. Any board meeting, exec sessions, any budget meetings, minutes and function, any function. Administrative function of the board, including policies.
Okay.
I mean.
But here's the thing too, we've never, I mean, just to say a current um. Person that are not a current, somebody else that used to work at the school that used to take minutes and whatnot, what was that person? Um. Label, I guess you'd say, hiring to this in the school, Janet, you know who I'm talking about, what was that label?
He was the executive secretary.
Yeah.
The executive secretary. Right, so when has our manager, business manager, ever done any of those duties, I think we're kind of getting. I can see where you're, where you're going, Carol, and I and I kind of agree. But I feel like. You know, as a charter school, we're we're still treading in different waters here. And we can compare all we want, but but you really have to look at, you know, we we've asked them to to do this, and they have, and it's kind of like a blanket. That they have to do because the charter, there's so many different um categories. And I I I see where everybody's coming from, but I feel like if we wanted all this to be done, we should have asked. For this to be done in in the proposal, instead of having a proposal in front of us now and then completely. Um, I mean, I know we're here to. To try to approve or deny or or whatnot, I feel like we're completely. Picking it apart and. I I'm not sure, I might be off track, but that's just what I'm. I'm taking from it.
You know, I I don't have a position, Cindy, at all, I just gathered all this information because when I saw Thad's proposal, it was like, well, that's. Interesting, and I just felt I needed to get some more information, so I don't.
No, I completely feel it's interesting, too, and I and I thank you for reaching out, and I'm not trying to be. Rude or disrespectful in any way, and I'm glad that you did reach out, and you know, and get all this information. I just, I feel that the. The charter school, I feel it, there's so many different avenues that's. Different, you know, instead of just the. You know, district wide.
I I agree. Because what they don't deal with is charter school requirements, and so, yes, that's a whole added. Thing that our business manager does have to. Work with, so I absolutely agree that they have. Some added responsibilities, they have some lesson, you know, our business manager doesn't deal with transportation costs and finances. And and the nutrition department relating to the state, they they don't deal with it in the same way as a full district does. But they absolutely have all the added charter score requirements. So, yeah, I absolutely agree, there's there's some additional charter thing.
And and Bernadine has taken on policies as well.
I think it's. Janet, what did you?
I I just said Bernadine has taken on policies as well, just so everyone is aware of that. That was one thing you listed from.
Board board policies, yeah. And that's great. That is something that Susan used to do.
I would love to see our business manager. Take on board minutes, for instance, I I would really love to see that. But it 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 was just interesting getting that information, it would, they all basically said it directly correlates to the size of the budget. But then we make our own decisions.
That's fair. I I expected this position to. Probably draw the most scrutiny scrutiny just because of the sheer difference that's being proposed and. But, you know, we felt that. Changing it to make it less of a percent increase proposal, just because it it's so much like isn't a very genuine thing to do either in the interest of, you know, sort of just. Trying to be objective here and. You know, that's why we have what we have in front of us.
I have a I have a question.
Yeah.
That for those have been on the board. Longer and Janet, do you have any idea? What the what the struggle was? Getting your, because Dan, you or that you had mentioned that it had been hard to get people to even. Apply for the position, so is there any sense of what the issue was there? Was it compensation that was a big factor, or did you hear other things? About why it's been hard to hire for this position before?
I was just gonna say quickly, I think it's been difficult filling many positions. I just don't think we have the applicant, the applicants coming in like we used to.
Wait, but the business manager position we've had problems with since well before COVID.
Right.
Agree that right now, the last year or two, we've had trouble filling anything and and that's. But the. In in many ways, that. Problem has been a new one for like our teaching positions. The the since since the day I joined the board, we have struggled mightily to have someone in the business manager position consistently, and I. I guess what I feel like we've ended up having to do. Is, you know, Linda's been a certain Linda for her long tenure on the board, she's come and gone a couple of times. Has been a longtime, you know, friend of the school that wants to help the school out and has done that when we've been able to. Talk her into doing it. You know, Bernadine lives in the town and has a child in the school right now, so I, you know, and it's it's great that it works out. But I do worry just based on, so if I sort of step back and look at, you know. How much we've struggled when we don't have sort of a unique situation with someone local that just wants to do it. You know, work out when that when that opportunity isn't there. We have struggled in in the past, almost struggled to the point where like the the school is at risk. I mean, I think that things could get that far sort of out of whack because we don't have. Consistent competent. Person in the in the job, so. And I don't know that. Leah, that I know exactly why all those reasons are, I just generally speaking, I think if like, you know. Compensation is you, if if it's that hard. You know, compensation is probably a factor.
One of the things that I ran into was that our business manager used to only be three days a week. And the people that had these types of qualifications. That we were interested in as a school didn't want a three day a week job. They actually wanted a five day a week job.
Yeah.
And so that was a factor. I I think there's a couple of things that's really good. I think the good thing is that the step increases, we've never had that for a business manager. And I think that's very attractive. So somebody that is a business manager wants to see a career path and you can see. Where they can, where they can go. And I think that does help to sustain people, staff at our school, so I really like that. And I think those are a good increases. I I I think the the only thing I'm struggling with is in reflection to. South County. You know, Wasco, South County. I I think because we're trying to align ourselves, you know, into the district and therefore the county and the area. It seems to me. Just based on some of the information they gave me and their suggestions and what. One of them was hiring a new person, and it was between forty five and fifty K. And that seems to be. That that to me just seems to resonate as. A good, solid increase for our business manager now. But doesn't particularly put it out of whack with other business managers in the county.
Forty five K year on, do you have any idea how many contract days that is?
Uh, no, I did not ask contract days.
I would assume it's probably the same as their administrator.
I would think so, that I'm sorry, I didn't ask contract days.
So if if we just assume that's two hundred and twenty contract is forty five.
What is that?
I'll tell you one second here. Assuming an eight hour day that, uh, just a minute. That's twenty five dollars and fifty seven cents an hour.
Our business manager is currently working four days a week, not five.
No, I know, but we're we're adjusting this to an hourly rate.
Okay.
Twenty five, if 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 a business manager worked two hundred and twenty days.
Okay.
At a forty five thousand dollar a year salary, because the Southwest County Business Manager probably is.
Yeah.
They're probably not working three or four days a week. That's something a little unique to Moser School. At two hundred and twenty contract days a year. A forty five thousand dollar a year salary equates to. Twenty five dollars, let's call it twenty five sixty. An hour. So if you're, if you have, I mean, that's. Less than, well. That's less than anything on the proposed, so to your point, the proposal here exceeds that. Pretty much everything if. The business man, our business manager was working two hundred and twenty days a year, but but they're not, right, so.
So twenty five something or other an hour, it's a still. It's almost in between the current and the proposed. And it brings them out at, does that bring them out at forty five to fifty K?
What what was that again?
Does that bring them out to a annual salary of between forty five and fifty K?
Does it bring who out? I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
If you're, you just came out as twenty five dollars an hour.
He he calculated that off forty five K.
Okay.
So twenty five sixty an hour. Times two hundred and twenty days, times eight hours is forty is forty five K, right? Now, our our business manager, I believe, works a hundred and eighty five days, not two hundred and twenty.
Right.
So that same twenty five sixty. Would be. Thirty seven thousand nine hundred. A year, not forty five thousand, because of the lesser days.
Okay, thirty five, you said?
Thirty, we'd call it thirty eight, just for to make it make it around numbers.
So that is less than her current salary, because her current salary is at thirty nine.
Yeah, that's correct, because our current business manager, I believe, is on step ten, so they currently make.
Oh, right. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Well, that would be what, so forty five K year would be step zero.
No, forty five K a year right now would compare to between our current, without any changes, step five and six.
Oh.
The leftmost table here is our current, we do have a step schedule right now.
Yes.
So. Between steps five and six would be. If our contract was for two hundred and twenty days a year. Would be equivalent to South Wasco, but we're not two hundred and twenty days a year.
No, so that could. To make this sort of pan out, could step zero then start. At the where our step five starts. And then. Yeah, and then we would know in current proposal.
Yeah, okay, yeah, the current, yeah.
Are you saying start at twenty five for the BA at step zero? Then add three percent for the MA at the zero and go from there?
Yeah. I'm thinking that would put us.
Tell that setup now, BA twenty nine three.
Well, I'm thinking that would put us in line with the rest of the county, actually a little higher, which is great. Because I think that would compensate. Then for not having board duties, but do but having different charter school duties.
Fair enough. Let me try to do that right now, just a minute.
Does anyone else have any comment? Maybe I missed it, but I was gone. But. About that.
And I appreciate Carol getting the the competent, the comparable, you know, with South Wasco.
Yeah, the context is helpful.
It is.
It was. You know, it's an it's an interesting position, and and then I suddenly realized that. You know, everyone in Wasco, other than D twenty one, are more similar to us.
I'm almost done, just a minute.
All right, we appreciate you being the mathematician. You work away. We're happy to take a few minutes break. Dan, did you deal with an emergency?
Yep, another overdose.
Well, that was quick.
You guys see my screen now? Let me try to zoom in. Sorry about the. Is that better?
Yeah, I can see it.
So I think this is what you're suggesting, Carol, is that we. On this proposed table. Start BA step zero twenty five sixty and then do what we was been proposing all these tables, a a step increases a three percent increase as is. BA to MA. So if we followed that pattern, this would be the the revised proposal. These percentages here represent the percentage change that 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 represents relative to what we currently pay for the position, so. It's a if a person had a BA, it would be about a seventeen. And a half percent increase with an MA, it's about a twenty one percent increase. That is compared to. The proposal I originally presented, which was in the thirty to. Fifty six percent. Range.
I think that looks. Good, I think it's recognizing the qualifications still. I think it's putting us in line, which. You you know, with other business managers in education, and I think that's important, because that's what we've strived, striven to do. You know, with our teachers and admin, so I don't know, what does that, what do everybody else think?
I like having the context, I think it's, you know, it's good, it helps us come up with, we had a very hard time finding. Where to start that off at, so I appreciate, I appreciate that, Carol, and it allows us to go, you know, with something where we can compare apples to apples, like you said. Like we've talked about earlier, so I feel good, I feel good with this.
Yeah, I can support it, I I do appreciate the extra information, it really helps sort of shape the proposal. Leah, did you have any thoughts?
Just agreeing, I think it's, I think it's a good compromise and it's still a good pay increase for our business manager.
Okay, um. Let me see what else I have here. One more position. Our front office secretary, so. I have here on the left. A comparison of our current hourly compensation for our front office secretary against. The D twenty one secretary five position, D twenty one has published salary scales for, I believe, secretary one, two, three, four, and five. They all have escalating levels of responsibility, although I haven't. I have, I I will, I confess, I have not like gone and scrutinized the job descriptions for all those. Five secretarial positions and compared them to what our current one does, I just simply picked. The highest paid published. Secretary position for the district as a point of comparison. As you can see at our current compensation rate. We underpay relative to the district for steps zero through five to the tune of about two percent. And then we start surpassing the district after that. To where by the time we're at step ten. We're about ten percent more than the district. And that climbs to be twenty percent, should we have someone around for twenty five years? The reason we climb, all all our support positions are actually like this in terms of really ramping past the district as a function. You know, significant experience. That's a a a byproduct of the fact that the district's published. Pay scales for support staff have distinct step zero through five, and then once you get to five, there's not another step increase until you're there ten years. And another one at fifteen years. So there's not, at the district, there's not necessarily a lot of incentive to stay in a support role past step five. Because you won't see another increase till step ten. We have historically at Moser School for quite some time. Had the same percentage step increase for in recognition of each additional year of experience, so. When we're fortunate enough to act to have employees that stay in these support roles for a long time. We do compensate for it, and we used to be in that position, but then we had several years ago. Numerous longtime TAs retire. And and a longtime executive secretary. Take, you know, make a good career move and move move up to a position with the ESD. So we we don't really have support staff there past step five right now. Anyway, the the right hand. Table. Is the proposal that we came up with. To try to. Find some something closer to parity with respect to the district. Again, this is hard to do because. Our front office secretary, you know, does have a much broader scope of duties than. Probably even a secretary five at the district, so just to pay them the same as that, in my opinion, probably not really equity. The proposal we come up with starts at. You know, a five percent. Paying five percent more. To someone in our front office secretary position than someone in the secretary five position would be in. For those first steps, those first six steps, zero through five. And then provide the opportunity, if we're able to retain that person for additional years. To make that difference be more significant, and and I I personally think because that's position is so. We we all know what it was like to have someone in that position that was a long time experienced person, right? It made so many things go smoother for the school. In the proposal we did, this proposal does cap out at fifteen steps versus. Twenty five steps, because the the way this is set up, if we ran it out to twenty five steps, you know, we probably run the risk of. Getting into a position where we can't afford a twenty five year front office secretary, because twenty five. Uh, getting into a position where we can't afford a twenty-five year front office secretary, because twenty-five steps gets us to a pretty. Pretty high pay. Also, all our other step schedules for our licensed staff have fifteen steps as well. So we didn't just come up with that number out of the blue. Um. So that's that's the proposal. Also difficult to compare the position. But our hope was that this at least comes close to capturing the fact that it probably is a more varied position with more responsibility. Um. And thus the five percent increase, you know, or differential for the first six steps. And and then, you know, quite a bit more if if we keep someone past that. Any comments or questions?
Um. I always have a comment. I just thought that excellent. Um, I I thought this was good that I thought that the recognition. Of MCS having slightly increased responsibility. Was good. I thought the comparison to secretary five was good. I looked at that position and those responsibilities. I felt that was a really good comparative analysis. Um, and I think the five percent increase difference was good, and I like it cutting off at fifteen, too. Um, you know, we can always make an individual decision at sixteen if if necessary. So. I liked it as is.
Yeah, I would love to be in the position of having a long time front office secretary that was on step fifteen, and we had to decide what to do about that. Like, that would be a good problem to have. In in the in the same way that I would love to have that problem for all our teachers and everybody that they're all so experienced that, you know, we have other things to consider. So.
I think the other thing there with the fifteen versus the twenty-five the district. Uh, have is that. We get to that top step faster. So if we have somebody stay there or somebody's there, they're going to get paid more quicker. Than they would, uh, at the district.
Agree, because yeah, if you compare these schedules, uh, you know, in the proposed schedule at step fifteen. We're at thirty-one dollars and three cents an hour, which is already more. Than our current schedule would have someone at with ten additional years of experience. So reducing the number of steps really isn't. While I presented it that way, I should have presented it differently. Um, we're accelerating. You know, the time it takes to get to 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 maximum.
I'll be back.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
I'll just know, and I like this too, and we'll just note that the um. You know, the total salary ends up not being anything terribly huge. Um, at nineteen bucks an hour and um, for a job, I think that it's a really big job.
Um.
And I say that just to say, yeah, I mean, I just say that to say that, like, you know, there the I think. Probably in the district as well, the 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 um. Secretaries are are not terribly well paid, uh, and ours works. A really has a really diverse job and works really hard. Um, so I appreciate the pay increase. Um, and just want to vocalize um, my admiration for someone willing to step in and do that job, which I see as a really. A necessary uh, job for the school, uh, really critical to school functioning. Um, and um, yeah, no, I mean, if anything, I would lean towards. Um, more pay, but I realize we're already going above. Uh, the district secretary five position.
Thank you, Julia. Uh, Leah, I saw your hand up.
No.
No?
I like this.
Somebody had their hand up, didn't they? No? Okay, um. Well, I guess that leaves us with trying to decide where to go from here. Um, I do have one final slide, which I guess is an important one. This sort of represents the proposal, and I need to modify this to reflect the changes that I think we all agreed to in the business manager proposal, but. We just looked at each position individually. This sort of. Lays out what that would. If we accepted all the proposals as presented in this presentation. What that would do to the. Annual compensation for each position. And so these annual comp numbers obviously factor in, you know, number of contract days. Or number of hours worked if it's a support position. Uh, in the percent differences. So the ignore the business manager line here. I think I can update this table here in just a second. But even with the proposal here. And I'm instructed by by business manager as we did on the licensed staff. To take the annual compensation differences and add. Thirty-two percent to that to account for things like pers, all the overhead and stuff that goes with salary. So. The 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 sort of additional cost. To the school to adopt these changes this year would be. Let's call it fifty thousand dollars. Um. If you'll recall, of the new funding that we secured for this year, and then we can expect to to generally get every year. We had about fifty-eight thousand dollars left over. Uh, after making all the licensed staff compensation changes. Um, and of course, the the sort of general goal was to try to get these remaining positions to parity. And stay within that fifty-eight K. So I we we just barely do that with the proposal I made. Now let me real quick try to um. Give you a new number. Okay. I want to double check this after the meeting because I want to make sure I didn't make a mistake on the fly that. We then all approved, but I'm I'm pretty sure I'm I'm right on this. Uh. This is that same table revised. To reflect. The change I just highlighted in the in the proposal for business manager. So this account, these these changes account for. The step at which each of these, the the people currently filling these positions are currently at. What they're currently making, what their number of contract days is, and what the proposal would do to their current compensation. So. We would be committing about thirty-three thousand dollars of. That fifty-eight K that we have left over. To to make these changes, and they would result in. Percentage changes to compensation. Ranging from on the low end, four point seven percent increase to twenty-one percent increase on the high end, which is. Actually, a very similar range to what we ended up doing for our our licensed staff. I think that. Those changes range from. Either five or eight percent on the low end to close to thirty percent on the high end. Twenty-eight to thirty. Um. So this proposal, if we adopted as modified. Would leave. Twenty. Five thousand roughly. Of that new money on un- unspent, so to speak, uncommitted. Um, there I I will remind everyone that when we started this whole exercise, there was a desire to. Have some of those new funds around as we enter, you know, not not committed yet, I guess I should say, as we enter our. Contract negotiation. Cycle for. Non-salary related things like health benefits and, you know, things that affect all of our employees, right? So we we have kind of had a. Been sort of given a heads up that. You know, there might be a request to look at how some of those benefits compare to some changes that have been made in our district since we last did that comparison. I I would assume if we make any changes, they're probably going to cost money. Sometimes you find one that. Reduces costs, usually not. Um, so it might be a good thing that all of that hundred and sixty K isn't isn't. Committed quite yet. Um. Because there may be, you know, uh, that there may be an opportunity to. Use that in a way that. Benefits employees in a compensation manner, but just not on salary, right? Some other some other meaningful way like benefits or whatever. But I I just wanted this to be, we haven't yet couched all of this in the form of a fully revised, you know, a three million dollar budget for the school. What we have done. Is forced ourselves to keep all the salary adjustments we make in this sort of exercise where we're trying to get to parity with the district. We forced ourselves to try to work within. That hundred and sixty K of sort of new funding that we secured because we. That's the eighty-three to eighty-nine percent change that we secured from the district. And we can reasonably count on that to be a a regular recurring, you know, additional funding. So it makes sense to me to. Since salaries are also a regular recurring commitment. That we, uh, you know, stay within that. Sort of upper bound.
So one thing that I think that is important to me is that the um, ED and the dean moved to two-twenty. Um, that's still, you know, we're we're looking at similarities to the district. That's still five days less contract pay than even the district. Um, so I do think the two-twenty is really important, and I I don't know how Janet feels about that for her and the dean. Position, but maybe you could speak to that, Janet.
Haven't talked to Ms. Langley, haven't talked to the dean about um. Really the length of her contract, so I can't speak for her, but. Two-twenty seems very reasonable. I mean, like Thad said, that is what I end up working anyway, so.
Hmm. To me, those, you know. The admin, the amount of work days of are very important, and I think we've underestimated our admin workdays continuously, which is always what. Always ended up that our admin is working non-paid, and I I just don't think that's fair. So I would really like to see us move to two-twenty days for both of those contracts.
Yeah, I I guess I'd like to say, and I in it's Janet, I I don't want this to come across the wrong way and that that I don't care what Ms. Langley thinks. I I do, but. In the same way that we're trying to, you know, with these salary adjustments, sort of. Look at the position and the requirements of the position. Uh, with respect to what the school needs. If, you know, I think if if the board and you as the director feel that, you know. Our administrators really need to be two hundred and twenty days. Then that's what we should be looking to do starting next year in the next contract year.
I I would say yes, both administrators need to be working two hundred and twenty days.
I I feel the same. Um. The lower table here represents what the cost of the school would be if we had two hundred and twenty day contracts this year. And I think that's important to look at in the sense that while. We're not committing the additional money in this year, we will be in future years if we move to two hundred and twenty days. So this just shows that we're still within that hundred and sixty K total, you know. Sort of pool, but but, you know, now we're at like fourteen K left.
So could we? Um, does everybody agree with the two-twenty? Could we start making some sort of firm? What? That could you ask us? Maybe if, you know, if everybody else likes the two-twenty and we could cross that off our list of fun things to decide?
Um. Yeah, I mean, I guess I guess we could, as I mean, I look at, there's really two sort of main things we should probably vote on separately. One is the. For the proposals to for these changes to salary, and the other one is in the the. The financial impact to the school for this current year will definitely be this one. Because the the day, the two hundred and ten days is sort of already a foregone conclusion for this year, right? Because the extra days off have already been. Yeah. Last summer. But so, you know, yes, we could certainly vote now if we wanted to, and whether we want to as a school moving forward, starting in the July first. Twenty-twenty-three contract year. Um. Have. Two hundred and twenty day contracts for our two administrative positions.
So can I make a motion for that? Just that? That that.
Yeah, I I I I feel comfortable voting on that separately because I feel like the data shows that we can afford to do it. So. Uh, you know, I think there's enough information to show that. We can definitely afford it.
You're good with that. Okay, so I I'd like to make a motion that are two administrative positions. For starting next year, starting July one, twenty-twenty-three, move to a contract of two twenty days each.
I can second that, or or Leah, you beat me to it. Thank you. All in favor? Does anyone oppose to that motion? All right, motion passes. So that brings us to what to do with the specifics of the salary proposal. So I made the changes that we did sort of real time here to the business manager position, and I think. Everyone's comfortable with that. So I I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I. I think the only sort of remaining point of potential disagreement is. You know, whether we maintain these two. Columns in the uh, the two admin positions to recognize difference in licensure status. Um.
So I talked to the to this um, quite a bit, and I really considered, um, you know. Nah. Just the whole, I I listened to sort of everything what Julie has said and other people have said. Um, but I think just from my. Years in education, I still come back to the fact that. The board or the interviewing committee are the ones that make the decision. And they make the decision on who to hire as an ED. They make the decision on what qualifications they're looking for. So if you have a a board, say, as the hiring committee, that are. Absolutely um, feel that the school at this time wants. Someone with very traditional TSPC licensing requirements, then that's the person they're going to choose. And if the board or the hiring committee decide. Looking at the candidate forum. That they want someone with slightly different, a more. Educational or experience, then that's the person they're going to choose. And that's exactly who should be making that decision. So I I I think we just continue to leave it there. Um, but I suppose my recommendation is that we scrap the two columns because we don't have that for teachers and we go with one column. And we actually take the higher column. Cost. So because we can afford it. And I want to pay our ED and our. Dean of students the highest that we can afford. And still leave the hiring decision to the board or the hiring committee for the type of administrator they want. And I I don't think um, three percent is going to make that much different to attract people. So there you go.
Anyone else?
Um. I'll just say that I in the interim looked up the types of courses that would be required to complete a principal license preparation. Program in Oregon and to earn a principal license. And they are precisely the sub sorts of courses I would hope that our administrators would be taking that Carol has spoken to, um, that they are. Independently and often voluntarily taken, but. You know, diversity, equity and inclusion, building community within the community. Uh, between the school and community, um, a practical element, uh, where they're shadowing actual. Administrators and troubleshooting. These all seem like very valuable skills. I don't understand why we would discount that sort of education. Um. But um, I I don't want to, the meeting is already at. Almost two hours. I'm pretty thick. I need to bow out here in a minute. Um, I I'll just put a plugin uh. For recognizing administrator training and and also incentivizing it. Uh, I I in, you know, um, I was quite impressed with the sorts of courses uh, that I was able to find online, um, that an administrator would be required. Uh, to take to achieve that sort of an, uh, you know. I there the courses I would hope our administrators would be taking, and I understand from Carol that there are other ways. To get some of that education, um, but I. As a board member have. Um, not seen a way um, to require that otherwise. And I will also say that the difference to me seems pretty modest. Um, you're you're, it's a three percent difference if you look at totals. When you're at the over a hundred and K range for most of those um. Two columns, it's about three K in between the two, which percentage wise is a pretty small percentage of your income. I I don't, um. It it's not uh, that I'm advocating for some huge difference here, but I I would do. See value in recognizing achieving that additional education.
Thank you, Julia. Anyone else want to weigh in? Dan, any comments?
Uh, I'm I'm sure of what I've missed, but going back to this, I felt like. Um. There was a need for having the two columns. I think it doesn't take away from the first column. It's already a a pay raise. A large pay raise over what we currently are um, set at. Um, so I think everyone benefits in that situation, not taking money away from anybody. And uh. I do support what Julia is saying. And so far, I mean, seems like this is the one step. One area where we have some central disagreement. There's a little bit over the. And so far, I mean, it seems like this is the one step, one area where we have some central disagreement. There's a little bit over the. Um, dean of students, I think we hammered out the. Business manager, I don't know if I missed anything else, you know?
No, we're pretty much just down to this. Yeah, this is pretty much it. Yeah. And we, we uh, we did just vote to, to change and, and approve unanimously to. Change both admin positions starting next contract year to be two hundred and twenty day positions rather than two hundred and ten. So that, that's, that's really all you missed.
Excellent. Yeah, I think that's definitely needed. No, I feel like I, I'm okay with the way this is set up here with the E D day rate. And the separation there. I look at it more as an education incentive.
Uh, Cindy, Leah, anything you want to add or?
I would say the same thing. I agree with both Dan and Julia. Um, it's not a huge percentage difference and we're. As with the teachers, we're record, recognizing more education at the higher level. So I think this falls within the same realm.
I agree as well.
Or are we, uh, I can entertain a motion to, we can either approve these individually or we can approve them all as. Represented in this final table here. This one includes the changes we made to the business manager position.
I'll make a motion to approve the final table there with the changes to the business manager.
We have a second on that. Thank you, Cindy. All in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone. So that leaves us to just one final thing and I'll get us all out of here. Um, we did talk back when we started this process that because we were taking, you know, we're, we're going to take a while to make these decisions for these remaining positions. That we would retroactively compensate for this difference for these positions, you know, for this current year. I, I'd like, I think just in the interest of making sure we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, I'd like to. Formally vote to do that again, now that we've got actual numbers in front of us. And to empower me to engage with the business manager to make sure that happens in our next pay cycle. Um, so I'd like to make a motion that. The board direct myself to work with the business manager. To compensate the E D dean, business manager and secretary positions. Retroactive for time already worked this year to bring them in line with the. Proposed changes that we just approved and they're in front of us on the screen right now. We have a second for that. Thank you, Dan. All in favor? All right. Thanks, everyone. Um, I want to, I want to thank everyone for your time tonight. I, I didn't expect it to be a two hour meeting, but I do think it was a really useful. Um, meeting and I appreciate everyone making time. We do our regular meeting next week. Dan and I'll work on an agenda. I'm about to be gone for nearly six weeks, uh. Racing my sled dogs in a lot of areas that probably do not have sufficient internet for me to be on Zoom. So I will likely not, I will try to be present in February and well, the next week and in February's meeting, but. It's highly likely it will not be. Dan's going to chair the meeting. Thank you, Dan. I wish everyone a good night.
It's that I, I just want to thank you for the work that you did on this. It was very helpful. The, to really have all these figures and, and the columns that you chose and, and I know that was a lot of work. So I really do appreciate the work that, that you did on this. So thank you.
And I, I'd like everyone who worked on this. I, I know it's a, it was a lot of work.
A lot of work and a lot of time. Um, and I know this was a long meeting and lots of hours of discussion, but. Um, there's a big changes and I'm really excited to see all these changes for, for our staff. So I think this is great.
Thanks, everyone.
Good work, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good.